Let's call to order the last council meeting of our bicentennial year. Twenty twenty four, December twenty third. Call to order at seven and seven P M. And we need to rise for pledge of allegiance. Josh, can you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the republic of the states, one nation, under God, in the name of God, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I know that was on short notice. Please call or roll.
All day.
Here.
Michelle Zaza, semi-farrah.
Here.
Huber.
Here.
Schla.
Here.
Tal.
Yes.
Shai was asking on some side field.
Here. Thank you. Would someone like to approve the minutes from our last council meeting on December ninth?
I move to approve the minutes.
Sir.
Motion by Sanam, second by Joe. Sanam, any suggested changes?
No.
Joe?
No.
Anyone else have any changes from females? Please call or roll to approve the minutes.
Clap.
Yes.
Huber.
Yes.
Semifarrah.
Yes.
Tal.
Yes.
Aldair.
Yes.
You.
Yes. Thank you. The minutes are approved. We have no prearranged participation. We're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak this evening? I know it seems like a funny question, but I'm gonna say it anyway.
It's a protocol.
The record reflect no non-arranged participation? Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare? Seeing none? Excellent. Would someone like to move the agenda, please?
I'll move it.
Move by Ray.
I'll second.
Second by Y. Thank you. Any discussion on the agenda?
Hopefully, there's nothing anybody.
Please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Semifarrah.
Yeah.
Huber.
Yes.
Tal.
Yes.
Aldair.
Yes.
Clap.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. We have no public hearings this evening, so on to page two of the agenda. Does anybody have comments on our upcoming meeting list?
So are you all filled with all your representatives that you need?
Um, yeah, the only one we have to figure out is I think Y has difficulty making the here on River Watership Council. Um, meetings which are on Thursdays at five thirty. Last Thursday of the month, I think, at five thirty. Um, I did talk to Bev Hill. She might be interested in doing that.
Okay, yeah.
We'll see where that comes. So until until we make a change here, the listed.
All right. I definitely cannot make that next one, though. I.
No problem.
Won't even be in town, so.
No problem.
I mean, I I can tell you, I mean, if we wanted to pay Andrea on overtime, she might be willing to.
Okay, let's get through December. We'll take it up in the new year, I think. They probably just want eggnog and. Whatever. So it's on the so it's on the eggnog. Okay, first report tonight is from our Public Services Superintendent. Tim, are you online with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
How was everybody tonight?
Very good.
Good. So we got the two week report in front of me, uh, in front of you, excuse me. I can feel any questions. I have a couple of things after we're done, but uh, go from there.
It might great.
Who hit the light pole on Monument Park? Was that a truck or a car?
My understanding it was a truck.
Going down.
What's that?
Going down Central Street?
Yeah, it was while they were uh, getting done with the the Holiday Hustle stuff. So.
A commercial truck? I mean, like a semi or a pickup?
I know. I don't think it was that. I think it was just a regular pickup truck.
Okay. Can we bill them for that? Or we just covered under our insurance? I'm getting tired of people hitting our pilots.
Yeah, so 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 uh, we 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 um, we can pay through it through our insurance, then our insurance will back bill their insurance.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, this, I mean, we 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 know who did it and have a police report for it.
Aren't those like three feet off the road?
Uh, this one sits a little bit further back, but I think it was something I I didn't get the whole report on it. I just got called and 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 uh, made some phone calls to the D P W to take care of it.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
It was the one over by the potties, right?
Yes.
Yeah, cuz I saw that.
Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Wow, you're behaving tonight, huh?
Well, it's so much I can understand it more.
I thought you were gonna ask how many letters Santa got.
I already know that.
I was going to.
Fair enough.
You know those come to my.
All yours, Tim.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to know that let everybody know, obviously, the the rink got put up. Um, we have a Bobcat. I did get the invoice, so it should be showing up here within the next week. And the fiber grading that we had installed at the wastewater treatment plant is all done and and it is excellent. It's better than we thought it was gonna be. That's it.
Thanks for a good year.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for letting us use a D V W. It's luminaria. I don't know if anyone thanked you. I'm sure a bunch of people did already.
We have, but I could always let them know more. They greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Next up is our Community Development Manager. Michelle, how are you? Live from New York?
I'm not quite in New York yet, and hopefully the s- snow that's coming through this evening won't delay our takeoff. We leave at seven o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Safe travels, cheers.
Appreciate that very much. Um, you have my report in the packet. I only have one verbal update, but I'll put that on hold to wait to see if you have any questions on the report.
Right?
Dexter Senior Center update. They get their final?
Not yet. They have not. We're working on it with them.
Okay.
There are some things that they changed um, during construction in anticipation of their condo docs already being reviewed and approved, and that didn't happen um, um, in the manner that they had planned on. Um, and none of it was the fault of the city or staff.
Oh, I I can see that already.
It's 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 it was the best laid plans, you know, it just didn't work out the way they had hoped it would.
Well, there's a protocol and there's a formula on it. You wanna take a chance, you take a chance both ways. Any feedback on the annexation policy?
I have only gotten feedback from one councilperson.
Okay. How about the D D A?
How about the D D A on what, sir? I'm sorry.
Uh, duh, duh, duh. Were you at the D D A Subcommittee? And oh, did they do anything on the offer?
So the D D A met last Thursday. I'm sorry, was I talking over someone?
You're okay. Keep going. Keep going, Michelle.
The D D A um, meeting occurred last week, but they did not have a quorum. So they discussed various things on their agenda, but no direction was taken and um, um, they did not end up having a closed session to talk about the attorney-client um, privilege communication um, in reference to the um, to the offer. Um, but what staff will be attempting to do is put together a meeting of the Subcommittee with the um, developer after the first of the year. There are three key points that they'd like to go over with the uh, with the developer.
Okay.
Okay.
How about um? Where was uh? Oh. Have we heard anything on? I lost my place. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Wanted to, oh, has there been any more lame duck session legislation that's gonna affect us? I know they had a big hoop to do and they had to close down short of quorum and all that.
Um, not that I'm aware of, not as far as things dealing with economic developer land, economic development or land use or zoning. Um, but I'll be honest with you, Ray, I haven't really, um, I had lots of stuff I got pulled in all to multiple directions at the end of last week and just didn't have time to to check it out.
Well, I mean, obviously, something big would have made um, call your attention. So something didn't get your attention, I'm assuming it wasn't a major. I know they had a major blockage. All right, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else have any questions on her written report? Michelle, no questions on your written report?
Okey-dokey. Excuse me. The only update I was going to give you was on the Dexter. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Senior Center, um, Ray, Mr. Tell's question did take care of that. Um, I will ask uh, one last time, uh, please make sure if you have any comments for me on the um, uh, annexation policy that you email them to me. Have a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, does anyone have anything under any of the boards, commissions, reports that aren't bolded? We do have a written sheriff report in the packet. Michelle?
I was at the Parks uh, Commission meeting.
Okay.
And I don't know what's been provided them as a update of what's going on at the fire hall. Is there some kind of uh, general packet that you could forward to them so they could see the progress? I know I've seen things in my packet about timeline. I don't know what they've received, if anything.
Yeah, so well, so so I actually, you know, for in my report, um, there's a a monthly update from
Right, right.
Amlem. Um, but I know Josh had commented to me that um, Parks is looking for for an update, so I think that's the thing that we can put together for him.
Yeah, it's just something to be so we could be aware now of what's going on, so we don't get caught looking.
Yeah.
And to contribute.
And so you'll do that in January?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's fine. In the in the packet.
Okay. Any questions on the sheriff report?
Can't believe we have so few DUIs.
Okay, uh, I think we're down to your record, Justin.
Sure. Uh, does anybody have any questions? I know we have a fairly light agenda this meeting. Um, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at um, list of items tentatively for next meeting. Um, there's, you know, a good number, but a lot of them are gonna be consent agenda items. Dan and Joe, if you guys can remind me to get with you maybe after this meeting to talk about a date for uh, the roads meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then uh, we did get a thank you from the Dexter High School students who uh, came at the last meeting, uh, give the presentation. Um, we have the update from uh, Cunningham Lamp about the progress uh, made last month in November, um, on eighty-one forty. And then we are working on uh, updates to the resident handbook and our uh, employee manual. Um, a draft of the resident handbook is, and there's still just a couple of items that were were uh, waiting to figure, well, um, needing to figure out um, like how we're gonna handle um, Marie's contact information in the interim, you know, between now and in June. Um, I think the the assessing side is is pretty straightforward. The um, finance and charter side, um, debating on essentially what we're gonna do with phone numbers, whether um, Tim's gonna take over her phone number or what, so. Um, and then there's an update uh, that I received from O H M with the Sloan Kingsley um, re- report that they generated for um, maintenance and replacement dollar estimates uh, for what what's been proposed. Um, and I I'm imagining that we will have uh, Sloan Kingsley back as a discussion item or a work session in January um, as they're working to to finalize their their well um, um, investigation. I know that they had run it um, and something, something ran short, I think that like they they ran out of um, some additive for their for their fuel, for their generator. And so they ended up having to to cut their seventy-two hour investigation short, so they're gonna have to do it again after after the first of the year. Um, but it sounds like they're they're planning that pretty shortly after the first.
Really poor planning. I mean, you gotta, I mean, it's gonna be on your checklist. This what I'm dealing with here?
Plus, they didn't pour the fuel down the well.
There's probably an additive they gotta add or something for diesel. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I ask you some questions? I need to propose agenda items.
Sure.
Uh, we talked about the Sloan Kingly. Are we still gonna get rid of those uh, existing Dexter Crossing stuffs?
So I I think that um, that was added as a proposed item for future agenda um, in the event that uh, Sloan Kingsley failed, that that annexation request.
Why would we leave it now?
Uh, well, I I think part of the proposal involves um, attaching to those stubs.
Oh, correct, that's. Uh, let's see here, um. I'll leave this one for Sean Fire Services Coordination with other municipalities. I wasn't making able to make the D A F D S out on your agenda. I don't know if it went forward or anything new on there. Ice rink alternatives. Are we gonna put out the ice rink or is it out and I just?
So so the the ice rink is out. I think we're looking at that at what to do next year, and I think part of that'll depend on what happens this year with.
How how good a shape is the young ice rink right now?
I I I mean, I think the 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 rink itself is in pretty good shape. Um, I mean, we we always have the potential for issues like if somebody puts a skate through
Right.
Through the liner before the ice is frozen, um, and then it drains all the water and then the ice rink is dead for the for the season. Um, if we don't get, you know, good weather patterns, you know, if if we get a week of freezing and then a week of, you know, above forty and a week of freezing, then the ice never never fully freezes through and, you know, we potentially, you know, get a week, a week or two maybe out of it, um, where people can access it and skate on it.
Is this the only site available for an ice rink?
Um, we we did bounce it back, uh, so we we it it had been in Monument Park for for a long, long time.
Right.
Um, and then we tried Mill Creek Park.
Right.
Uh, behind the fire station, and that didn't work out very well. Um, we ended up with um, a bit of vandalism, like people intentionally messing with it, and so we brought it back up to to Monument Park. So it's it's not, it's not the only possible location. Um, I I think the the question is more is there still value in it if if it's, you know, only accessible for one or two weeks and potentially not even that, you know, is there something else that maybe we we want to do instead? Um, you know, so I know there are places that do like um, um, interactive lighting displays and and that sort of thing.
And let's see here.
That's our Christmas trees. People walk along, they have plug them.
Yeah.
Plug them in.
Yeah.
That's the interactive lighting.
Have we pursued it anywhere on the sale of the metal used item? Is that very preliminary still?
Uh, so actually, I I I have that um, uh, as a discussion item uh, for the first or second meeting in in January.
Very good.
For for for, we're uh, we have been prepping an item uh, to bring that for council.
Yeah, my goal is to eliminate half of this crap.
Fair.
I mean, urgent issues.
Good plan. I like it, right?
Oh, you know, I like it. I didn't even ask about the passport then.
Well, I and and I'll have an update uh, for that for the first meeting in January, too. Uh, we 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 got an email back from um, from um, the federal entity that that manages, you know, what organizations serve as passport facility.
Yeah, we gotta dip into the federal government. You comfortable with them on?
Well, this is so they 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 said they're they're not currently accepting any additional applications for passport facilities.
Interesting.
So that's 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 the answer.
I'll sign off right now.
Yeah, cuz I feel like we're kind of like not into that anyway.
Well, if there's a legitimate, you know, need and it's not too cost prohibitive.
No, many. Sorry, we're just muddling.
No worries. Uh, so the um, Sloan Kingsley, the O H M report that is in the packet, uh, I wanna say that on page seventy-six, the map is not the current map that they um, are testing the well. Um, this was the old map that they presented to us in our October session, but in November eleventh, um, council meeting, uh, we received the updated map um, that shows the location of the um, of the well, which is really on the northeast of the property.
Were the detention ponds?
Yep.
Yes. That's where they currently are testing the the well.
The detention pond is proposed.
Right.
Yeah, it's all this field.
Um, I also would like to add that uh, council member Semifaro and I had our town hall on December fifteenth, uh, and we had um, put Sloan Kingsley as the main topic. We had about sixteen uh, residents from um, Dexter Crossing joining us and um, asking a lot of good questions and clarifying a lot of um, things, so. The main information we shared was the ones that were shared with us in our October work session and November map and and things like. There is a strong desire of um, closing the Wellington stop um, that goes into Dexter Crossing from um, from the subdivision, from the residents and from the H O A.
Yeah, there is some a lot of good feedback. Uh, one of the other things that came up about just the design in total was um, possibly moving the road that runs parallel to Wellington slightly south or to move those lots slightly away to keep a buffer in the back backs blocks. Um, there we got response or questions or responses or comments that ranged everything from is there a way to do a a referendum on this to, you know, how can we, you know, uh, address the construction traffic? Um, we got a lot of feedback about this traffic in general um, along that in that area um, turning out to Wellington there. Um, so it it was a good discussion. It ended up being slightly more, but it was primarily the Sloan Kingsley stuff, but good discussion, so. Anybody want it? What? Anybody on the sixteen that wants it, like it's all in? I think I heard a couple of people say, I understand this is probably gonna happen or could happen, but I don't think anybody was was of the opinion that they'd if they had their druthers, they would choose to have. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to add that um, I really appreciated the conversation. It wasn't um, none of the people that came were on the this is what I want and there's, you know, end of discussion. It was really good questions, good conversations, understanding a lot of the bigger pictures. We had a great conversation about the water and well and municipality water, things like that, so um, there was a lot of um, good, meaningful discussion versus, you know, this is what I want and I want it this way kind of thing.
Right. Was there any questions raised about the rest of that property with the helping hands?
There it was, yes. Um, I think mainly was in the understanding of what is the the total plan. Um, n- not a specific, not not really in the details of many hands. Um, there were some questions about Baker Road Access, whether that's gonna happen through that property or not. Um, that's at least my recollection.
Thank you. Anything in particular about the residents that are going in there? Any frustration, apprehension, suspicion?
No.
All right.
Laura Stiliers?
Sure. So um, the last thing I'll I'll close with is uh, we uh, you may have read it, but we were the successful recipient of a four hundred thousand dollar uh, M D N R trust fund grant uh, to go towards the Mill Creek Park Playground Project.
Right.
Good kid, you know, kudos to Josh, who's who submitted the application.
Yeah, that was uh, kudos to you. You should really let him speak to it for a second.
I mean, it was, I mean, it's those B N R ants are not fun and they there's a a lot of effort goes into them, so I'm really glad that we were able to be successful and effectively, you know, really increase that budget to be able to do uh, even greater project than we were planning on, and so I'm really excited, uh, bring a great amenity amenity like that to uh, for our kids in our community.
Yeah, wait, there's no adult stuff on this?
They're called both.
Okay, okay, good.
After after we ate, uh, after.
Okay, whatever. I think it's. So we received a written communication?
Uh, we 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 were notified through through the portal.
Okay.
Yeah.
It showed in our budget, so that's as good as there.
That's 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 all I got.
Okay. Um, all I wanna say is Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Uh, it's the first meeting in January. We will have the bicentennial committee in, say thank you to them. We'll do a proclamation and uh, photo and whatever else we need to do. Um, it's been a good year. Um, well, thank you to all of you for everything you've done. Anybody have any questions for me? We'll firm up the dates for the goal setting next year.
Got any D A F D update?
Yeah, you got any money?
Well, we already knew that. That was the question.
No, um, so Zach and I tried to ask them to wait a year to go from five full time to six. Uh, Zach made a motion um, of the other five of us that were there, two from sorry, one from Dexter Township, three from, well, two from Webster and and our at-large. Yeah, the other four people were planning to vote no on the motion, so uh, that first motion failed four to two. Zach and I voted uh,
Right.
to try it, and then um, we passed eighteen full firefighters. So we passed, we passed our budget, which is good. We can't go without a budget or without a betting plan, so we did pass that. What it means is that our our next year's commitment is gonna increase about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah, I thought it was only two hundred and two sixty pushes it up even further.
Do something, Ray. I can get you the exact number. Um, and then um, it's likely in in twenty twenty-six, it'll go up, you know, again, mostly to the C B A.
I I have no doubt of it going up every year.
So.
I noticed in the uh, audit.
But they they, well, so don't let me just ramble for a second. So they you know, the 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 townships want um, they want two people covering the township, same as we've had.
Sure.
And, you know, some of this is not it's not easy for us to swallow because we've had the the benefit of having people here the whole time, and they want that benefit in their own community. They they all they all look at it from the perspective that they they didn't have a station. They invested in a station and they wanted the station staffed. Um, so they
That makes sense.
They they voted to staff the station, so that's where we are. I think it's gonna be a, you know, a tall hill to climb to go beyond six. But nonetheless, you know, we we've come a long way with that fire department.
Oh, yeah.
And and I think I looked back in two thousand and either fourteen or fifteen. The budget was like one point five million. And we just proved approved something short of three point nine. Think about that, and it's gonna be close to four and a half. It'll be three times more in twelve years. And and a lot a lot of it's because there are three stations now as opposed to one. I mean, we have, you know, three times the people. We're still somewhat an on-call department in terms of we we do have paid on-call staff, but they're not really the ones that are participating. Every now and then there's somebody that that does it a little bit. Um, we did get our audit done on time, which was a challenge this year. Um, the D A F D auditor is Reyna, who this board knows very well, Reyna Evans. Um, last year, we we passed a C B A that brought our firefighter salaries up to, you know, the average or thereabouts in Wasna County. Um, we got rid of our uh, what do you call it, our accountant, uh, John, um, his last name, I forgot. Anyway, we got, we we fired our accountant and brought in a new person, Kimberly Haynes. Um, she is now doing our books. We've gone from a payroll system on the fire department that was mostly hand-entered to now using uh, paychecks, I think. We got a new auditor, that's Reyna, and um we now are moving into twenty twenty five with. Six full-time firefighters and a chief and an assistant chief.
Alright, so our budget should be easier to follow now that we have a new auditor? Or uh.
I don't know if the budget, actually, I I that was my one criticism at the meeting, that the the spending plan um. And it's not through the chief, the current chief's lack of effort. It it didn't have as much detail in it as past years.
Right.
And I asked him when he published it to actually expand upon what's there. He had a lot of things rolled up into one line item. Uh, as an example for like firefighter wages and salaries wages, instead of showing. Regular hours. Uh, full-time, I'm sorry, um overtime, uh paid-on-call. It was all one number, so there was less, you couldn't see the breakdown of what we were provided. He's gonna unroll it for the, the version that we publish is gonna be unrolled, so that we'll be able to see those numbers. But that's where we are.
One final question. I noticed Reyna made two recommendations, either to change the structure of our fire department or become a. Actual authority where we can levy.
No, Ra- Reyna didn't make that recommendation.
Who didn't make that?
So Karen Sickerina and I um put together a narrative at the beginning of the of the DAFD budget. And. What we what we tried to acknowledge is that. The two biggest factors that steer the budget are the cost of the people. Meaning the firefighters that we pay.
Right.
And how to fund the equipment. Okay, those are the two biggest things that we deliberate over and and uh. Basically have debated for years. You know, each each entity that's part of DAFD funds. Provides funds in their own mechanism. We use our general funds. The two townships each have a public safety millage. Although they're different public safety millages, and then Dexter Township has a fu- fu- fire millage that's dedicated only to fire, can't be used on police. And Webster Township has a general public safety millage, I think, that goes towards both. Or maybe I have that backwards, but one of they're they're slightly different. You know, there's, there's the, there's one thought out there that maybe a, maybe DAFD shouldn't be. Set up through an interlocal, but we should be a fire authority like Chelsea. Everybody likes to like the Chelsea. If we were a fire authority, you could, you know, it would be their responsibility to levy their own tax. Which means the funds would not come out of our general fund. Um, but it would require a vote of the people to approve. The millage every X number of years. Um, so there's. The pros, I guess. I guess the pro is that. It doesn't affect our budget as much, although individually it's a tax that everybody would have to pay in addition to whatever. The city of levies. Um, I think there's certainly less control with a fire authority. Depending on how it's set up, obviously, you know, an authority like that, the charter or whatever this governancy authority is not. Written, but. You know, ideally, people would be appointed to the board, similar to how they're appointed now, but there's less control because they would be. Controlling their own budget. I don't know how people feel about that, to be honest, but we we put those out there as things that should be explored.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's a way to make it. Instead of every year, having to look at your number of runs and divide your budget and expect expecting another two hundred and sixty, you know. Two hundred, whatever you, I mean, a lot of times, a lot of times we don't know until the end of the runs come in or.
Well.
To propose a budget.
Yeah, Ray, we don't, we don't, we don't know our percentage until the end of the year because it's the total number run divided by the total number of. You know, runs in the community, right? But, you know, essentially, it's a third, a third, a third of the cost. It it's approximately that, not exactly that, and and John John Scharf mentioned that, you know, he he was gonna vote for the. The eighteen full-time firefighters, which equates to six firefighters on a shift at one time. He he said he was gonna vote for it because. Of equity and service. It it his, well, his comment was that, you know, all the townships deserve a chance to have two people there, and that it was safer for the firefighters to operate. On a buddy system, two or two. And. I talked to him after the meeting. I didn't take this on at the meeting. Um, but. You know, the reality is, is that most of their their average run is longer than ours would be.
Yeah.
I mean, they're a bigger township, so to go from wherever they are to wherever they're going. Uh, involves more time, more fuel, more wear and tear on the vehicle on dirt roads. It's it's not equitable, okay, but but. That isn't gonna be resolved in that meeting. I mean, the the the. What's the, the weakness of the interlocal that we have is if two communities agree on something, the third is is being brought along. And in this case, you know, we're the third right now. Now. The fact that I wanted fifteen firefighters full-time instead instead of eighteen. Doesn't mean I want my goal wasn't eighteen. I just wanted to get to eighteen later. I wanted a little more time. To allow us to build our station and to um. You know, kind of preserve our reserve a while longer. That didn't happen. I think we're probably better off as a community where we are. Um, that being said, I don't think it means that we can't think about other things. We can think about the inner or the. Fire authority, if that's something we wanna think about. I think that would take a lot of work, um, a lot of timing, uh, because, you know, the. The two communities have their fire millages also, so there's, you know, you gotta figure out how that would work logistically. Um, I was talking to Justin after the meeting, uh. You know, we, if we're gonna spend a million and a half on fire, you know, what do we spend roughly a million on place?
About six hundred thousand. Uh, it it'll be six hundred thousand and.
Is that all?
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, okay, so so, you know, there's two point one million. You know, we could explore the idea of a combined public safety group that does fire and please. I don't know what that would be or how many people you need or what that cost would be. I'm not even sure that it's less expensive, but I mean, if. If we wanna look at options in order to be able to say to the residents, the cost is the cost and we're. Either if we're concerned about whether we're paying the most or the least, we could look at some other things. But we have a good fire department. And, you know, right now, we're building a fire station. Everybody knows that our temporary station is here. That's where we are. Uh, Karen's gonna be the new chair for twenty twenty-five. She's the, uh, she was the supervisor in Dexter Township. She's now the board, on the board. Lonnie Smith is their supervisor. Uh, I'm gonna be vice chair, and the treasurer and the secretary will stay the same.
Is there, you know how the county sheriff does a PSU, but it was a. Cost per officer, whatever that is.
Yep.
Is that a possibility where we have a fire department based on everything across the board, rather than, I don't know, that would be even. Cheaper than the way we're doing it now. That would be, you know, a huge undertaking uh when.
Well, Ray, at one time. At one time, our runs were high, I'm gonna say like twelve years ago. And then it shifted. I'm not quite sure why, but our runs went from the first out of the three to the third out of three or. Maybe the second, but the third. This year, we happen to have the most runs, and that's the first time in. Uh, at least the last five or six years, I think, that I can remember that we had the most runs. I can't explain why that is. Um, Zach has observed that, you know, some of the runs find. Uh, there there's a lot of runs to certain addresses.
Right.
If you get somebody, if you get somebody in the community that that has a health issue. They tend to call for help and you go back and you go back and you go back. That's what it's there for, right? I mean, that's, that's why we have a service. Um, some of the things that they respond to, you know, you might say, geez, they help somebody get in or out of the car. I'm not criticizing or saying that's good or bad, you know, it's each each person might judge it a little bit differently, but. They provide a service and and that's where we are with that. I mean, if we wanna try and change the the way it's set up, we're gonna have to approach them about meeting because we're in a three-party agreement. It used to be a four, actually, it used to be a five-party agreement. But right now, it's a three-party agreement. Joe?
So. If our budget is gonna be roughly one point five million.
In twenty twenty-six it will be.
Okay, that is a little bit more than, it's around five minutes for us. Dexter and Webster Township do not pay five bills. Their fire millages are lower than that.
Correct.
When we went through and we studied changing the interlocal, the expert that we had. Said just doing it based on runs isn't a good idea. It's too up and down, it's too variable based on things like random. Medical issues or things like that that we've seen, and you should include property value because that's what you're protecting. And population, because that's how many people you're protecting. So if you look at population and you look at taxable value, Webster Township is about. Is over two times, I think, what we are. Dexter is about two times what we are. And they're both about one and a half times what we are in population. So if you brought all those factors into it, we'd have a significantly. Smaller slice of the pot. So. You guys, as far as I can tell, you got two options. You can keep on doing what we're doing because. I don't see any way that the townships are gonna say, oh, yeah, give us a bigger bill. They just have, they're ju- they just have never done that, so they're not gonna do that. The only other option. Well, two other options, too. Second option is go with the authority. Then they assess millage and it goes across everybody. Everybody in the townships pay the same millage that everybody in the city does. And I think it would be in our best interest to do that. I don't know, again, I don't know if the townships would be willing to put that even to a vote because. You know, they're gonna say, we're gonna pay more. That's just the argument they come back to. And the only other option that I know of is to leave the DAFD. Back to SIO and find out about doing fire protection from there. And frankly, I mean, if we get a no and a no from the township. I think we need to at least approach SIO and see if they're interested in letting us do that because, I mean. They're they're letting the city subsidize the townships, because that's what we're doing. And I know the argument is, oh, they've got substations there, but the fact of the matter is, is they did not do. And go through the need study that we went through, and they did not build a ten million dollar station. They built three million dollar station. They did the Walmart version of things, not planning to support the community, only planning so that they could get firefighters for themselves, so. This is gonna become a problem in two, three, four years. It's gonna be a real problem on the budget.
Well.
Yeah, it it, I mean, it's, it's already a problem.
Of course, it's, and it's always been a problem.
Already been.
To an extent.
I don't have an easy answer. I spent about. Six or seven years from two thousand eight to two thousand fourteen or fifteen trying to talk about a different regional model. And there there was not willingness to do it at that time. We had written, we we wrote new agreements, we wrote new. Thoughts, new ways of doing it. You can talk about smoothing, five-year averages, different formulas. All the things that, you know, should be, you know, play nice with the same. Pail and shovel, but there wasn't a reason, or there wasn't people at the other end that wanted to do that at the end of the day, and I don't know how to. You know, you can't force anybody to do something they don't wanna do.
I know, but they'll be forced to do something if we have to realign ourselves to protect ourselves.
I I don't even like the word forcing that. Okay, I mean, I mean, there there has to be a reason why somebody finds the benefit to do something. No, you know, and and, you know, we, we, we found it beneficial at one point in time. To make an inter, to do an interlocal, to not be on our own. And that wasn't, that wasn't necessarily us, but it was us. We found, it was, it was all, it was all the city's fire department or village's fire department at one point in time, and we found a benefit. In having an interlocal, and that's what we're in. It's the same agreement that was that was signed forty years ago.
In a completely different world.
I'm with you, I'm I'm with you.
And I mean, we cannot solve this tonight, and frankly, this is, makes me, I'm getting a little. Cause this is a discussion we need to have, but I'm not sure right now is the time for this discussion.
Breakdown.
I mean, I agree with a lot of what's being said, and like, my thought was, and I didn't even wanna say anything, but like, my thought is, when you said. Well, we're the third and we have to go along with it. Well, when is that gonna change? In my mind, that's not gonna change in the future. We are now in that position. The two of them, forty years ago, we were all much more similar. Now, those two entities are more alike, and when are they ever going to choose something that benefits us? Because it's not gonna benefit either one of them. So. We we're in a box and we're not solving it right now, but it's a discussion that needs to be had, and the problem is already here.
I I agree. I I think that uh we have that list of adjustments of of uh stuff we wanna talk about. I think that. At some point, we need to discuss this.
We can continue to discuss it.
Right.
My goal, based on Ray's question, was just to fill in on what what action we took.
That's correct, and this is all based on my.
None of the, none of this is a surprise.
No.
Okay, none of surprise, that the, you know, the cost keeps going up, and. I've I've said, but we're not the only community in this state or other states that have the same problem. Okay, the the the, if you have any type of unionized public safety. One plays the six around them against you. They they bring in the averages and the the cost. Goes up and goes up and goes up. It's, you know, it's why Justin um. Mentioned to me that our own state, what, rep, was putting together something for minimum staffing. You know, as a legislative thing, you know, minimum staffing is not in our best interest. There's, so there's, there's all sorts of reasons why this, this, this model is difficult to do. An authority isn't gonna save you or me from paying for it. It might make it a little more equitable based upon property value, okay, like the rest of our world. It might do that. But the cost is still gonna be the cost. Okay, that's, that's the difficulty with that. I didn't mean to cut you off, you had to hear this.
I, that bill, I was listening to some people talk about that, and that was just for the unions to be able to bring that to the table. It wasn't. I don't think they could make the bodies hired more people than they could afford.
Problem is, it's gonna end up in arbitration every time.
You think so?
Every time.
My opinion, my opinion.
But you, these communities can only afford what we afford, too, you know, and that's why.
Right, right where we're at.
Well, but, but when they look at you, well. What they think you can afford and what you think you can afford may maybe two different things.
Yeah, and 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 I'll just say it to be the first one to say it, you know, we we are not levying our total village.
Right.
We 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 probably, probably need to be doing that. Sooner than later, or the further behind we're gonna be.
Okay.
There's a quarter of a mill, I'm sorry, three quarters of a mill or eight tenths of a mill or whatever it is that we're not levying. Why?
But that doesn't mean that it automatically all needs to go to fire services.
I didn't say it.
I know, I just wanted to make sure that got said. I'm not saying you were saying that, I just.
Yep.
Because we have plenty of other things that we need to also prioritize, and if it's not equitable, if the fire service. Costs right now is not equitable, it's not equitable, and we need to figure out how to, how to. Resolve that.
I don't think anybody here is saying differently.
Well, sorry, I asked that question.
No, it's it's all good, it's all.
It's all shit I need to know, though, when I'm coming forward with the budget. You know, I wanna, I I wanted to go to that meeting, but I was too comfortable in wanting to. You know, I wanna, I I wanted to go to that meeting, but I was too comfortable in what way I'm gonna come.
I understand. Many people are.
It was so early too, six o'clock, I wouldn't even.
Hey, I know, it's Thursday.
Yeah.
Okay, weird. Any council member reports on their J seven? Okay, consent agenda is the hot item tonight.
I wanna move it.
Oh.
You're gonna move it?
Oh.
Just to get it, move on.
Alright.
Alright, you have to read it.
Tradition, somebody else?
I mean, I've been doing it and I would have been.
Well, then I certainly stand my movement.
Oh, you can, but you gotta read it.
No.
You can second it. Alright, well, then I'll move that we approve the one consideration item on the consent agenda, bills and payrolls in the amount of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and six cents.
I'll second.
Second, thank you, Dan. Try to be quiet, Ray, if you're not making a motion or seconding. Alright, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yes.
Tell.
Yeah.
Yes.
Someone, Carol?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We're background in non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the audience? Or online that would like to speak this evening? Seeing none, we're down to council comments. Mister Tell? Oh, thank you. Why?
Everyone be safe. And have a happy new year.
Do you think you, Dan?
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
Same to you, Dan.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Nope, no. Does anyone have anything to add to our proposed agenda? As we did strike password processing service. Good.
I would like to propose that we strike another one.
Okay, go for it.
Uh, Dexter Debate Team presenting the logical fallacies. It was in interest of one person who is no longer at this table.
Okay, uh, we'll see the motion for adjournment at seven fifty-two.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
I'm not gonna read it, well.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. One who carries. Thank you, Justin and Josh for coming in today. I don't know if you're off at home, but thanks for being here for the meeting. That, thank you. Tim, Michelle's already gone. Safe travels, Michelle.